We'll call this meeting to order at, what, 7:03? Welcome, everybody. I think this is truly going to be a really exciting meeting because there's like, like at a, at least from a facilities perspective, we're kind of at a transition point with, with things opening. So Tom has a lot of good news.
Yeah.
First, I want to welcome some new staff, especially Kim Lipinski.
Thank you.
She's the new administrative assistant and as part of her role will be attending these meetings and taking meeting minutes. So that's great. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you very much.
We're definitely very excited to have you on board.
Nice to be here.
As I'm sure Tom is.
Thrilled, thrilled. Yep.
And then not here is the new children's librarian Hannah Hicks.
Yes.
And I guess Tom will give an update on the children's room, but I would encourage you all to stop by the library and introduce yourselves to, well, to Hannah and anyone else you might not have met so far. Any questions or any comments on staff?
I think it's nice to just state for the record, you know, that as a tradition, we generally would, would meet the, the new staff at board meetings.
Yes.
So we discuss that with, with Tom.
Yep.
I will extend that invitation for, well, for meeting, Kim.
Yep.
And I'll extend that invitation to Hannah for the next board meeting.
Great, great. All right. Well, we will dive right into the agenda then. We have a lot of agenda, I'm sorry, a lot of meeting minutes to review. Kim sent those out late last week, so I hope everyone had an opportunity to review them. So I will, I don't know if you just want to go through one by one or...
Mr. Chair.
Entertain a motion?
I guess I would otherwise make a motion, but 320 of, 3A, which is March 20th, is yet to be described.
Okay.
So I will move along with 3B and I'll make a motion that we approve the March 27th, 2024 draft minutes of the regular meeting.
All right. Motion made. Second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the March 27th meeting minutes?
Yes. I don't know, Kim, if you don't have a computer, so you're...
I can, I can share here.
What do you need?
No, no, no. I didn't know if anyone needed it. I just was happy with the print. You know, I, I'm drowning in my own paper here. So under number four, executive session, we entered executive session at 7:31 PM. That's under 4A.
Yep.
And...
Phil, can we get the TV on? The TVs on?
Is the dra...
I think I might. Oh, I'm sorry. I gotta push a button, don't I?
No, April, oh, oh, wait a minute. I'm sorry. You know what? I'm, I'm ahead of myself.
He's got it.
I was ahead of myself. I, um, I apologize. I was ahead of myself and I was on March, I was on April 3rd.
Okay.
But I did make the correct motion for March 27th. And...
Or was that the 20th?
No, March 20th, we had a meeting and the minutes yet to be described.
Thank you, thank you for saying that.
And so, um, under the walkabout...
We're on March 27th?
March 27th, page three, the walkabout is number six.
Yep.
The, the last sentence after the first bullet, it says, "The seams on the gutters is..." It's just an incomplete sentence and I, I, if we don't know what it was, I guess it's not so crucial if we just delete that sentence.
Oh, I see. Yeah.
I guess.
It was probably like a probable cause or a potential issue.
And, and so I'm, I'm saying that the, the thought or...
We don't know what it is.
Yeah, but the, but the first bullet point sums up the, the issues of the gutters and that, so rather than try to recreate or think about what was said about the seams, I'm just going to recommend through you, Mr. Chair, if everyone is in agreement, to delete that since we don't know what it was.
I agree. Especially since it's the walkabout, it might be in the next month or...
Yeah.
Yep.
And then, uh, under number 12, we'd been placing executive session as a placeholder. So it, um, it would be beneficial to include under the executive session, item 12, that no executive session occurred, so that no one is looking for it. And then, um, at the very end, um, I guess this is to Kim, submitted by is the last thing that is, is, it's the very, after adjournment would be submitted by you before you, you would put in your name before, unless, were you the one?
I don't, I didn't do these, no.
Oh, all right, so...
I thought you did them.
No.
Um, no, this could have been done by the previous administrative.
Oh, yes, she did do them.
But what I, what I was gonna propose, what I was gonna propose is that any of the edits are gonna go to Kim and she will be submitting them.
Okay, right.
So even though she didn't write them, she will be submitting them.
Right, okay. Yeah, in other words, you're not necessarily affirming that you drafted them, it's just being submitted by.
Okay.
Yep.
And then it's clerks@grafton-ma.gov is, once we vote those in with the edits, the town clerk receives them and it's clerks, plural, at grafton-ma.gov and then it gets posted to our, our webpage.
Okay.
And so, um, so that's, yeah, so number 12, no executive session occurred. So I didn't have any other edits there. And the only other thing I want to mention, and I, I risk being ahead of myself on this, but in attendance, I know Cindy Zariello, library associate, was there as an observer and in a future meeting in June, she was also listed in attendance, even though she's not a trustee, but in the July draft minutes, it was motion that, that we, we were okay with her being included as being in attendance. So I don't know, because that didn't, hadn't yet occurred for March 27th, do we include Cindy as being in attendance? She's mentioned later as having been there as an observer.
I think, I think that's fine to leave her in.
Okay, all right, all right.
Yeah, I thought we discussed that last time, actually.
All right. All right, then I have no further edits on, on March 27th. Would I be sending them to you or are you writing them down?
I've made the edits here. I'm making the edits live here.
Oh, okay. All right, cool. All right.
And I will send them on to Kim.
Awesome.
Great, okay. So hearing no other discussion on March 27th, all approved?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, I declare the motion carried. All right, so next is April 3rd.
I move that we approve the April 3rd draft minutes of the open session portion of the special meeting.
Second.
Uh, motion made and seconded. Any discussion on this?
Yes, um, as I was ahead of myself on the previous motion, on number four, executive session, we entered into executive session under 4A at 7:31 PM.
Yep.
And, um, again, at the end of the minutes, you know, submitted by, and so, um, then of course you're gonna take the draft off of that. So yeah, that, those are the only comments I have.
Okay, I don't see those in the recent set that was sent around, so I will make those edits and pass them on to Kim.
Right.
All right, um, any other questions on April 3rd open session meeting minutes? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Declare the motion carried or submitted. All right, so then the next is the executive session portion. These are gonna be on your, um, on the table in a, in a printout. On these, thank you, Roger, for getting these put together.
It's about time, right? It's five months post back, though. Six months post.
It's not the oldest set of minutes.
Right. I saw, I'm not going to name a committee, but there was some committee meeting minutes of an executive board from 2019 that just got approved, so the Attorney General gets on the town clerks and takes these things seriously.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept the minutes of April 3rd for the executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on this one?
I'll just add that, um, excuse me, I included myself as being the one to submit them, so I'll just submit them to the town clerk.
Sounds good.
We were without a scribe at that time.
All right, um, so you will remove the draft minutes?
Yes, yes.
And then submit them. Great.
Yes.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Declare the motion carried. Great. Um, April 24th, the open session.
Okay, um, I move that we approve the open session draft meeting minutes of April 24th.
Second.
Uh, motion made and seconded. Any discussion on these?
Uh, yes, um, under absent, Dr. Teshada's last name, there's an I, it's at, at the end, it's T E I X E I R A. The second I was missing after the letter E.
Yep.
And, um, on, let me know when you're ready, on page three...
Yep.
There's just a typo where on, ongoing business, item 7C, the second bullet point and then the indented bullet point after that, no, pardon, pardon, third bullet point for a sentence, Aaron Rincard, about the nature and extent of...
Yep.
It's Renaud, not Renaud, it's R E N A U D apostrophe S.
Good catch, because I did read through that.
All right, um, tell me when you're ready.
I'm ready.
All right, item 14, at the very end, executive session, we entered into executive session at 8:10 PM. And, um, noting, knowing that the adjournment wasn't being, uh, wasn't being recorded, um, it was the motion to adjourn the regular meeting after it came out of his executive session. The motion was made by Doug to adjourn and Dana seconded. Um, and the meeting was adjourned at 9:21 PM.
Okay, so... Oh, I'm sorry, seconded by who?
Dana. And then, so, and then motion carried unanimously and the meeting was adjourned at 9:21 PM.
All right. Any other... Oh, I can't...
Do you have to rename it?
I just have to always put the address. Okay, perfect. All right, if there are no other questions, all in favor accepting the minutes of 4:24 for the open session?
Aye.
I declare the motion carried.
All right.
Um, next is F, which is April 24th, the executive session. This is the second handout that we got.
All right, I'll give someone else a turn.
I make a motion to approve the draft minutes of executive session for April 24th, 2024.
I second.
Uh, motion made and seconded. Any comments, discussion on this, these minutes?
You look nice.
All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Declare the motion carried. This is gonna be great, get all these off the list. Okay, so May 22nd, uh, regular meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve minutes from, uh, the meeting on May 22nd, 2024.
And I will second.
Motion made and seconded. Any questions on these minutes?
Just, um, just looking through these. Yes, um, under, on page three, um, number nine, old business, the first bullet point under 2023 Grafton Town Report, then third bullet point, in four board members attended the annual town meeting?
Yep.
Not town hall meeting?
Annual town.
Town, so town meeting and then T and M in town meeting are both capitalized. Um, and then, under the third main bullet point, which is the final main bullet point under number nine, old business, second indented bullet point, town administrators are going to repost a position? I don't know, town administrator, the town administrator is going to repost a position?
Yeah.
Or the assistant town administrator? I forget. I don't know whether it was Evan or William, but, um, it's just a matter of, it was a typographical thing where town administrator's plural.
Yep.
So I guess the town administrator is going to repost. Um, and then, of course, submitted by at the end, and so, um, so now, no further recommended edits.
Great. Okay, hearing no other, all in favor of accepting the many, meeting minutes of May 22nd?
Aye.
I declare the motion carried. So June 3rd is the one where we don't have minutes, right?
In June 7th.
The next two.
Yeah, minutes don't, in other words, we're required to document in some way to approve minutes and it's an oxymoron because we're approving minutes for a meeting that never occurred. It's just simply documenting and sort of closing the door on what would have otherwise been a posted meeting.
Yep.
So the clerk is expecting there to be some documentation that a meeting didn't occur, meaning that, in this case, no quorum was present, but we, we put it as a placeholder in case there was for both of those items under H and I, 63 and 67.
So Kim, do you think you can put together just some meeting minutes that are pretty much saying that there was no quorum?
Yes.
Is that gonna be sufficient, you think?
Yeah, it should and, and I, I think this would not have otherwise been on the agenda if there hadn't been a posted meeting. So if you go on the town web, the, uh, our, uh, library trustees webpage, under the minutes and, and agendas, both of those dates should be on there, so...
So Doug, real quick, I didn't notice this earlier, but most of the meeting minutes say we're in meeting room F. The majority of them say meeting room F. That could be true and I just misremembered, but, um, I don't, I think we were, the majority, we were in this room for most of our meetings. I don't know if that was just a copy piece.
Well, there was a series where we were over, wasn't F the one that's across the hall? There was a series where we were over there.
F is upstairs.
Upstairs, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, upstairs and over the hall.
There were like two or three in a row, maybe?
Okay.
Went after Chris came on, I think, that we were upstairs.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, right, when Chris started, because that's where...
But you know what, Aaron, that, that is a good catch because I think that sometimes we tend to recycle these documents.
Definitely.
And it's a good catch to make sure that, that they are in fact in the room and so...
I can do that. I can look at the posted agenda and just make sure that it matches.
Right.
Okay, each, or Kim and I can do that.
Great, thank you.
So then that would, that would take us on to...
We are on J, so June, uh, June 18th, which is our regular monthly meeting.
I move that we approve the draft minutes of the regular meeting of June 18th, 2024.
Second.
Uh, motion made and seconded. Any questions, comments on these?
Uh, of course.
Yeah.
I am that nerd. Um, so, oh, okay, um, the final page, um, the lone comment I will make, it's under executive session, no executive session occurred. Under 11 and then, of course, submitted by, yeah, so no executive session occurred under number 11, just so that is known, one is looking for executive session minutes.
Any other comments on June meeting minutes? All right, um, all in favor?
Aye.
I declare the motion carried. Uh, July.
I'll make a motion to approve the July 24th, uh, 2024 meeting minutes. Second.
Uh, motion made and seconded. Any questions here?
Yes, actually, um, that actually was on Monday, July 29th, and I know it was because I was in Niagara Falls, that's why I was absent. It was, it was, um, it was the one where we hadn't gotten the agenda posted in time, so we needed to make it the following week. So, um, there's a set of draft minutes floating out there. I don't know if it's the second set that may, that I think says July 24th, but the agenda, which is July 29th, and the, is an original set of draft minutes that correctly lists July 29th, which was in fact a Monday, and it, and that says GCTV conference room, so that was, that wasn't a Wednesday meeting, so, so I, so I guess...
Do we think these minutes are correct except for the date?
Oh, that's the one where, okay.
In other words, I, I...
That's the time where we were done. I, I know.
So, so I was out of town and, and that's why I wasn't able to make it and so it was, it was an issue of posting and so, but everyone, except me, was able to make it the following Monday. So I guess through you, Mr. Chair, if, if everyone is, uh, okay by consensus or you, or John restating his motion to reflect July 29th?
Uh, yeah. Looking through, I'm just making sure that this looks like the right...
So what was the correct date?
July, July 29th.
Monday, July 29th.
Yeah. So I'll, I'll amend my motion to approve the July 29th, 2024 meeting minutes.
All right.
And, and Aaron, would you be seconding that?
Um, I'm still undecided. Somebody else can do that. Because I'm just trying to look it up.
Okay.
That, that, I'm, I'm also pretty sure that that's the correct date, the one Roger's saying, which is July 29th.
Yeah.
Um, because that's what I have in my drive thing and then I do have the updated agenda here, which says, say, Monday, July 29th, 2024.
And I do have a set of draft minutes that says July 29th.
And this is the one that was at GCTV as well.
I will second.
All right, so, all right, motion amended and seconded. Any other discussion on these meeting minutes?
Yes, and, um, I, it was unclear, starting with item, this is just a two-page set of minutes, under the second page, which is a continuation of number three, ongoing business. Starting with 3C, um, construction update, all the way through item eight, public input, it's, it's, um, it lists, there's no, um, content regarding discussion. Um, it seems like a, um, a, a repetition of the agenda. And so the last discussion point before my comments of that chunk is 3B regarding Tom mentioning children's room update. And so 3C through 3F, um, doesn't have any content, nor does, I don't know if Chris did a walkabout and then under new business, the three items there.
I think I recall what happened at that meeting.
And then six, seven and eight. So, so I, I was not, because I wasn't at that meeting, I can't comment other than it looks like there's, there would have otherwise been at least some discussion documented.
Yeah, I mean, it does look like it's kind of incomplete.
Was there anybody taking notes then?
No.
It should have been recorded, isn't it?
Yeah.
Well, I remember what happened. That's when we found out that the children's room was gonna be, it, that the rug was not, was...
Right.
Yeah.
Was not gonna be repaired. It was gonna be repaired, not replaced, so...
So I think it was basically just some clarification about the installation of the carpet was discussed.
And I don't think, I don't, I don't know if we went on to discuss the other stuff because we, we spent a lot of time on that, is my recollection.
So, so I...
But it was just a clarification.
So I would, um, I guess we should probably revisit the minutes and make sure they're updated, either having, um, Kim go through the recording and add commentary or, um, seeing if maybe this is not the last version that was written up.
So if, through you, Mr. Chair, if everyone's okay by consensus, um, for John to withdraw his motion and Aaron withdraw his second?
Or we could just defeat the...
We could defeat, yeah, we could, yeah, that's true. Yeah, we could, we could certainly vote negative.
It's a motion to approve.
Right, it's a motion to approve. Okay, so, um, any other discussion then on that? So a yes would be to submit the current and a no would be to not submit it and revisit it next month. So all in favor? Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Aye. Okay, declare the motion, what's the right word?
Defeated.
Defeated. Don't usually say that.
All right, and so Kim will...
So Kim and I will, will work on the July 29th minutes.
Yeah, I looked at both copies and they're identical.
Okay.
Because you did submit one for the 29th.
Okay. Month ago. All right, moving on to the penultimate one, um, do I have a motion to accept the meeting minutes for 8:28?
I'll make a motion to approve the August 28th, 2024 meeting minutes.
Second.
Uh, motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
Uh, yes.
That was not in...
I don't think I got that one.
So I...
I gotta go back and...
I got it very, I, I got it this week and, um, I, from a content standpoint, it's pretty darn good, but the, um, this formatting error is regarding the numbers that need to be, um, not necessarily addressed. I guess as a matter of form, I think that if anyone is scribing based on a Word document, typically they're working off of the agenda and so everything falls into place in that way. Um, and in this case, it didn't. And so it, that's not fatal, it's just that if anyone were looking to match the agenda to the minutes, there, it's not, what ends up happening is ongoing business, uh, which is listed as number four on the front page, really is a continuation of number three. So then it bumped every item up a number and continued to do that after the directors' report and walkabout. And so, um, it's just a matter of, um, like on page four, like new business is listed as number seven, new library door locking system, but that's really part of new business. And so, um, how, it's complete and it's accurate, it's just that, um, what ends up happening is up until that point...
Well, on mine...
And then it can, and then it goes back to number one.
Yeah.
On, on page five, yeah, in other words, after state aid, in other words, after new library door locking system, which really is the beginning of new business, number seven, um, then any subsequent bullets should be eight, nine, 10, 11, et cetera, but then it starts, it repeats and starts at number one again on the bottom of page four. And so, except for the formatting, the content is accurate and, and the order that we would have discussed it, it just is, um, how it's, how it's ordered in number, which is okay by me, up to seven, but then after seven, it starts number one again. That's all. So...
Um, Kim, were you the one that did the August meeting minutes?
I did.
So how about we entertain a motion to accept them, given the renumbering?
Reformatting, yeah.
Reformatting to match the agenda. Does that sound reasonable to everybody?
Yep.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion?
I'll, yeah, I'll, I'll amend my, uh, motion to approve the August 28th, 2024 meeting, draft meeting minutes, um, on the condition that they get, uh, the, the formatting gets fixed to have the numbering match the, uh, the agenda and to fix any resetting of the numbers as well.
Second.
All right, motion amended and seconded. Any additional conversation?
Uh, two, uh, additional comments on the final page, under public input, to actually affirmatively say that there was no public input and that under adjournment, the meeting was adjourned at 8:47 PM.
Yep. All right, if there's no other discussion, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I declare the motion carried. And last, I will say that, um, it's gonna be nice to have these off our agenda. Um, so last one, are the meeting minutes from September, so just last month. So the last one are the meeting minutes from September, so just last month.
I'll make the motion to approve the September 25, 2024, draft meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on this, these meeting minutes?
Yes. First, Kim, you did an awesome job, by the way. It's so refreshing to actually now have this taken off our plate, you know? And, and, you know, that it's not hanging over our heads, because number one, the town clerk is going to be on, on us. But number two, the public expects, and I had some people say, we're meeting minutes, and so now they're here. They will be here. So that's awesome. Again, on the format, if, if these could be numbered, they are in order. It's just a matter of them being numbered, needing to be numbered. Like approving minutes is one, approving bills is two, and so forth, throughout the, the document. But from a content standpoint versus a formatting standpoint, at the very bottom of page three, new business, the, there seems to be a sort of a partial duplication of, of the motion. And so it says Doug proposed $13,951.23 for first item paid out of gift account to be paid out of state aid for those expenditures. The next sentence is really, Aaron made a motion to transfer that $13,000 figure from state aid account to gift account, Carrie seconded. And then it's Doug confirmed the motion made and seconded, but that isn't saying that there was a vote yet. So for starters, on the bottom line of that page, it's that, for, that second sentence, Doug's, Doug motion to transfer, you didn't make the motion, Aaron made the motion, and, and it wasn't to approve to transfer, it's, Aaron made the motion, yeah, I guess. Aaron made the motion to approve a transfer, really, is, is how it would read, from state aid account to gift account. So we're going on to the top of the next page, and Carrie did second. And so we're not yet at the vote. So it says Doug confirmed motion made and seconded. So what happens is, is that next bullet point really is a continuation of that same discussion. It's not a separate bullet point or a separate discussion. It's basically a continued discussion of the motion that was made regarding that $13,951. And then, so it ends with all in favor, and Doug declared the motion carried. So that, that's one bullet point, not two.
Yep, I got that.
And then encumbrance, all right, so about three more bullet points down. Doug entertained a motion to approve an average of 800 a month for 10 months. It's like four down from.
Yep, I got it.
All right. That was seconded by Chris, not Aaron. I had made a note. I, I was writing on my agenda. So it says motion made by Roger, seconded by Chris. All in favor, Doug declared the motion carried. I, I, I'm simply going off my own notes.
Yep.
And then, under the final page, public input. If we could affirmatively add that no public input was presented, or there was no public input. And then, under executive session, affirmatively say no executive session occurred. We've been putting that as placeholder. And then, all right, Roger motion to adjourn the meeting, and motion, all right, and motion made and seconded. Actually, Carrie, Roger motion to adjourn the meeting, and Carrie seconded. Not Doug.
I can see how that's easy to confuse the two of us.
Doug declared the meeting, Doug declared the meeting adjourned at 8:47 PM. Sorry to belabor the.
No, thank you very much for reviewing it in such detail. It's good to get the meeting minutes both matching the agenda and correct.
I'd like to note that our meeting was in Conference Room A, not the, not the, what do you call it, Grafton Television.
Oh, thank you for catching that.
Yeah.
That was my fault. So, and so.
It's 30 Providence Road.
So then, tailing off of what you said then, Aaron, is that I guess then the same would go for August 28, the prior meeting. In other words, 7:29 is when we were in GCTV conference room. That was when I was absent. And so going back to 8:28.
I only mentioned it because we had it, we hadn't approved it yet, but the other ones, I think Doug said he was going to go back with Kim, right?
Yeah.
Look at the agendas.
We will confirm.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Perfect. Any other questions on the September meeting minutes? All right, all in favor to approve them?
Aye.
Aye. I declare the motion carried. Very exciting. So we are down to H and I. Kim's going to write those up. Just saying that there was no quorum for those meetings. We're going to revisit the July meeting minutes.
So let me ask you this, and then what about March 20?
Oh, yeah, March 20, sorry. Yes, we will have to create them for March 20.
All right. So, you know, we had agreed amongst ourselves to, for one of us to do those. Is that something that Kim could go back and, and look at the, the video?
I can do that.
All right, thank you.
Excellent. They, I mean, Kim and the previous person that wrote these up did an incredible job at, you know, detailing the minutes. I wanted to query the group to see if that level of detail is necessary, or if we are okay with it being a little bit more. I mean, obviously, it's really important to capture any key decisions and any key discussion. But this level of detail, do we think that, that should continue, or?
Yeah, it's refreshing, because it really feels like you, you were there again, you know, revisiting it. I don't think it needs to be verbatim. You know, although that's, I don't think we're going to debate these in the court of law, you know, based on their accuracy and detail. So if you want to keep continuing at that level of detail, it's not necessary. But it's certainly refreshing and very, very good work. But, you know, you don't, don't need to feel like you have to overdo it.
Okay, sounds great. All right, so moving on, how long did that take us?
Forty minutes.
It was what? It was six months of meetings, so it's great to get that, most of them off the list. All right, so next agenda item is approving the bills. So I will entertain a motion for, there's four warrants. We can either do them all at once, or we can do them individually.
I, I move that we approve warrants number 14, 15, 16, and 17, in the amount stated in the agenda, and from the sources noted in the meeting packet.
Second.
All right, motion made and seconded. Did anyone have any questions on the warrants?
Do we have the sources noted in the meeting packet?
The, I, I had printed them off, yeah, they were, the, it says schedule by fund, is the first page.
I see them.
Yeah, it should be in each of the warrants.
Yeah, in each of the warrants, yeah. It's a scheduled by fund page.
Seventeen has a separate document for it, I think.
Yeah, it did.
But that, yeah.
Okay, great. All right, hearing no other discussion, all in favor of approving warrants 14, 15, 16, and 17 as stated? Aye. I declare the motion carried. All right, now the, maybe the more exciting, ongoing business. First one is the library calendar, Tom.
So we submitted to the board the proposed, the draft for the 2025 calendar year closing dates.
Yep, and I don't know if everyone saw them, but.
Had to review.
I do have them on the screens here.
Great. And so I humbly request that you would approve that for us. So we're, we're looking to start scheduling.
I would, I would ask if there's, maybe you could give some color or context into maybe some of the more difficult dates, or the decision-making process in some of these. I mean, without going with, through a fine-tooth comb, I just appreciate, you know, whatever kind of went into developing this.
To be honest, this was developed before I got here. And then, for the most part, it's carrying over the, the dates from the 2024 calendar year. So there's been nothing removed or added into it, from what we, from what you had approved for 2024. Then there were, there were some fine points that I worked on with, with the heads of the different departments to, to clarify some dates based on what they already had tentatively scheduled.
Yep. Yeah, I think typically, right, it's the professional development days that, that don't align with the town holidays.
Right, and those are the ones that I, that I worked with the department heads on, to, one of them, honestly, one of them was just way too close to the first one. They were only about four weeks apart initially, the first two. And we thought that maybe we should have put a little, little gap there.
Yep.
So that's why we moved, the second, the second one, the April 10 one, is, was originally in the beginning of March, which just seemed a little too close.
Yep, and Labor Day weekend, I guess is the only ones that, you know, that, Memorial Day weekend. Those just kind of draw my attention, Independence Day, Day Weekend. So those are several Saturdays when, you know, people may or may not be in, in town, looking to use the library. I'm not saying that I feel strongly either way, but those, those are probably up for, for discussion if we feel that, you know, strongly about keeping the library open those days. If this is, I've been on the board for a number of years, and, you know, if this is, these are dates that we generally do allow. I don't want to start saying, no, we're not going to allow these dates anymore, again, because I don't feel strongly about it. But personally, I do love going to the library on Saturdays, especially on holiday weekend.
Sure, and, and I would just say that some of the people who do feel strongly about it are the library staff, who would like to have those times, be able to travel with their, I mean, those are big travel holidays. And so that, that I think people would, would appreciate the ability to be able to, to do that.
And they're unpaid for the staff?
Yeah.
Like, so.
Dana, or?
I was going to say, I've been on the board a while. I think, I think it's appropriate, because the staff need to be able to spend time with their families, especially on these specific weekends, because that's what families do, and we don't want them, you know. I, I don't think, I don't think that we want their families to feel that they lost, they lost out on the weekend with their loved one because they were at the library. That's my opinion.
Yep.
Is, just out of curiosity, is that in line with what the town does? Does the town also have unpaid?
They typically don't work on Saturdays.
Oh, those, they don't work on Saturdays, yeah.
It only comes up because it's for the library.
Right.
Yep.
Anytime the, the municipal buildings are closed, the library is.
Yep.
Except for this, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, those three, those three holidays are big.
Same holidays.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
I know, I would just agree. Those, those three holidays are the big, you know, four-day weekend holidays that most people go, well, I shouldn't say most people, but a lot of people would be going away or planning that long weekend. So I'm certainly in favor of the Memorial Day and Independence Day and Labor Day Saturdays.
Looking at the calendar, those are the only three Saturdays that, you know, they have a holiday, you know, I think, I think, I think they deserve it.
Okay.
Yep. And I'll just note that, looking at last year's calendar, the only one that is, in addition, is the July Independence Day Saturday, because last year, it was a Thursday.
It wasn't on there. That is correct.
That would be awful to, be off Friday, have to go back to Saturday, like, no, that's.
Yeah, because obviously, the, what day that falls, the holiday falls on can vary year to year.
That did come up again, yes.
Yep.
It's actually been quite a while. I can't remember, but I, it's like 2013, and it's like the last time.
Oh, really?
Doesn't, I was a little surprised by, but we went back and looked, and it's been quite a while since it actually did occur that way. But people felt fairly strongly that.
And did we close early the day before on July 3?
No.
So was this, aside from Friday, July 4, which is pretty obvious as it's Independence Day itself, and then Saturday, July 5, you had mentioned the, the staff feeling strongly about those. What about the early closing at 5:00? Did you have any feedback regarding, on the front end, whether that was something, I mean, did we do that last year, or was July 3?
I'm not sure about that. Is it listed on the, on the calendar, on the library website? The library website.
It does, it does not.
We did, yeah.
Oh, wait, yes, it does, yeah.
So July, so there is some precedence for that.
Yeah, all right. It's only an hour early, right? Because isn't normal closing time six on Fridays? Oh, no, that's a Thursday.
It's a Thursday.
That's a Thursday.
So I, I think however we vote on this, I, I think it's important that anytime we're having multiple days closure in a week, that we really advertise the heck out of, you know, plan ahead, take your materials out, as we will be closed, you know, on the following days.
So we, we promote, we advertise, or whatever you want to say, we inform the patrons extensively for holidays.
Right.
So both with social media, in the library website, as well as signs up around the library.
And so, and on the final thing, Thursday, January 1, it's kind of like the 31st and the 1st are the same, but technically that's the 2026 calendar. I have no objection to include it in 2025, but.
I think we've always included, we've always had this every year, but we always include it.
All right, that's fine.
I've just been going through, checking the dates, and I think they're right.
So, okay, I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the Grafton Public Library 2025 closing dates.
Second.
Motion made and seconded by John. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I declare the motion carried. Thanks for putting that together.
Yep, well done. And thank your staff for working through that as well.
Okay, so next on the agenda is the grant updates. I think, I don't know when you were, I mean, that's, I don't know, maybe we should just scratch this off the agenda? I mean, this, to me, the only thing that might be applicable in this would be the HVAC update, because that's still kind of, I think, one of the few holdovers, right, of the project that.
It's probably in maintenance now.
Yeah.
Like we own it.
Yeah, it is maintenance.
Okay, so.
The installation of the HVAC units was the last one that we had on here that was.
That was in last month's.
August.
Or previous, a previous, okay.
Previous one.
So Kim, you can, we can scratch the 5B off the future agendas. All right, so the real excitement here is the children's room.
Yeah, I got nothing to report there. Good news is that as of October 15, the Grafton Public Library children's room reopened to the patrons. And we welcome back, welcome the children and their caregivers back into the room. So doors were open. It was the day after. So doors were open, it was the day after, uh, was it library? Is that holiday?
Indigenous.
Indigenous People's Day, of course, right. So it's on that Tuesday, we, we promoted it Monday by posting on social media that, that we were going to be reopening. This was in, decided by myself and the head of the children's room. So we've, we had been conferencing leading up to that. The children's room staff did an amazing job getting the room ready. After we had all the carpet installed and all the shelving units and everything moved back in, then the real work started because it was the library staff, children's room staff who had to get in and shelve every, every single item in our collection. So it was, it was huge.
I'd just like to say, I visited on Saturday and you could just feel the joy coming from the room. It looks amazing.
It sure does.
Heard so many stories from the staff, you know, just talking about how joyful the children were to be back, you know, you know, it didn't, it's just kind of spreading throughout the library, so thank you and, and everyone for doing such a great job.
Well, the, the, the staff were so dedicated and got the work done. And we decided that we, we're not a hundred percent, but we were about ninety-six percent. And we were ready enough to move forward and we knew how much it meant to the community, and so we decided to move forward with it.
And that includes the program room too, right? That program room is open.
Program room actually had opened a week before, week or two weeks before, and so we had been doing programming in the program room. So this was the, primarily the main room that was open. So I will say that we, we, we have an ongoing spreadsheet that we keep in the library of, of patron comments. And I grabbed a few from there, and I will just say that a hundred percent of our comments have been positive. Which I was really pleased. I wasn't quite sure it would be, but, you know, we were ready and all in all, we've gotten wonderful comments, so we're so happy to have the children's room back open again. You guys did such a great job, the place looks clean and nice, smiley face. There's so many new toys and things to do in the children's room, you guys really went above and beyond, thank you. So there were some really nice comments. My grandson is so excited the children's room is open again. We only came to pick up some holds and discovered the children's room is open, it has exceeded our expectations, so. All in all, the, our library community seems to be thrilled, to be thrilled. So we view this as somewhat of a soft rollout, so the timing was, was somewhat intentional. Partly because the staff hadn't worked it for a year. And so I wanted to make sure that they had time to get back into the flow of it.
Can you remind us when the new children's librarian started? Was she pre, she was pre-opening, right?
It was, that was October seventh.
Yeah, so it was like a week.
Was that your first day?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was like a week before the opening.
Which was done intentionally?
Right.
So we'd really, we'd really strove to, to fill that position so that she would have some time to get to know the staff, get to know the room, and, and really feel like she was contributing to getting the, the area back in and, and, and patron-ready. And she's been fabulous contributing.
Great, yeah, so I would encourage all of the trustees, if you haven't already been in there, to go in there, not only to meet Anna, but to actually look at the room and, and see the excitement there.
I just wanted to mention, one other thing that I really thought was great was the voting booth, so in the children's room, they did such a nice job of setting up a voting booth, and the children get to vote on what the shape is going to be for the dog tags for next year, for, for the doggy. So it's, it's really sweet, you know, just, you know, really, really nice, so appreciate that.
I didn't know there was different shapes to the dog tags.
Well, yes, it could be a bone, it could be like a house, like, yeah.
I get one every year, but I don't actually notice, I thought it was always the same, that's great.
We are participating in that.
So just a question, if it's a soft rollout, how does that compare to how you feel like you're fully operational? Is that kind of that four percent?
We are, we are fully operational right now.
Okay.
Yeah, we really are. One concern I had about opening prior to being a hundred percent was that, then when do we get the time? But the staff have, again, gone above and beyond, and so we're, I, I can't think of anything that we, we are lacking in, in the, in the room.
So is a grand opening still planned?
This is a tough time of year with so many holidays, we're doing, you know, trick or treating tomorrow and everything, so we wanted to hold off for October and just get that, that back in the flow.
Yeah.
And then we want to revisit.
There's like a harvest fair like every weekend.
There's, yeah, you know, there's scarecrows across the street, there's, you know, there's, there's so much going on. So I know that, that over the summer, we had talked about having some sort of grand opening. Given the time of year, I don't think it'll be out on the common, but, but who knows, we're New Englanders, so.
So within the next three months or so?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great.
Yep, yeah, I mean, one option also is, I mean, I think we talked about this last time, is maybe have some special, like, just events, like a, a story time, or I don't know, have a, what's that guy's name?
Mr. Kim.
Mr. Kim, thank you.
Did talk of a concert?
Have like a couple of those, you know, throughout the next two months.
Right, right.
Okay.
You could do that, let me know.
Okay.
He said he's, he's still working.
Is he?
Yeah, that's what he told me.
Cool.
Because I asked him.
If you could touch base with the children's room, that'd be great.
Yeah, okay.
Great.
I would, I would definitely encourage people to stop in to see the room. I would definitely encourage people to, to look at the library website calendar to see just how many activities we are offering, because it's amazing. Not just the children's room, but in the whole library.
Yeah, it is wonderful, so the trick or treatings would be the front door of the library.
I believe.
Yeah, that, I think, that's.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure, it's my first time for it, I know we're handing out.
So the whole, the library's open, normal hours, so people can use the facilities, but I think like the, the kind of the candy stop is.
I think that's in front, I think it's at the walking desk.
Which is nice because people then head over to South Street.
Yeah.
Is the eight o'clock closing going to cause, because we, these are new hours, right, since they had Halloween last year? Is that going to cause issues on South Street not having people, a place for people to go and use the facilities, take a break?
I mean, it's still eight, I mean, like, it's a little, you know.
It closes pretty quickly, but, I mean, we could.
Yeah, I mean, usually it starts around.
Try to go there, last year it was closed by then, I don't know.
The library?
No, the whole, South Street, there was nothing going on, I can't remember.
I think by eight.
Yeah, I think eight is typically.
It's fairly early, it's earlier than you'd ever think.
Especially with the darkness nowadays.
I, I think Halloween, you know, even though it's, it's dark, it's earlier than, it's like in my mind's eye, it's like, oh, yeah, it's at night, and it really isn't. Typically by eight o'clock, most people are, but I understand your point, there may be some stragglers that would otherwise need to use the facilities.
Yeah.
But.
Well, just monitor it and let us know how it goes.
Great, any other questions on the children's room? If not, we will move on to the friends update by Carrie.
So.
Tom's gonna go over his report later, excuse me, I didn't interrupt you.
Correct, he's got his director's report later.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend this month's friends meeting, however, the good news is that the friends' corner is open again.
Yes.
So, so that's wonderful, so, so that brings in revenue that the friends use to support new library passes and other, you know, things for the, for the library, so, so that, so it's that ripple effect, you know, so it's, it's kind of like one of those slide puzzles, so we have like the children's rooms there, so then everything else kind of falls into place, so it's wonderful.
Does that mean, are they accepting books again?
That was my question.
So, so that actually, when I was in the library, that was a question that some of the librarians had as well. So the current position of the friends, and this is something that can be revisited, but the current position is that they like to accept the books in advance of the large sales because, you know, and, you know, like the two weeks before. But, but it is something that could be reconsidered, and like my, my suggestion, I'm gonna, I'll talk to them, is that perhaps we have, you know, a member of the National Honor Society, maybe commit to stopping in a few times a week to help with, you know, emptying the bin, because that was really the issue, is that it was difficult to empty the exterior bin for, you know, some of the, you know, the primary members of the friends who, who kind of do it ongoing, so.
I think you can get some volunteers, I can.
I think so, because I think there's a lot of students who really like to volunteer at the library and are looking for service hours, so I think if it's something that's on a schedule, that, you know, could be really beneficial, but, but again, it's up to the friends, but, you know, but that would be my recommendation.
We're, they're not accepting books now.
They're not, excepting them right at the moment, but, but before our next meeting, I'll talk to, you, I'll, I'll be meeting with them for the next meeting, and I'll suggest it, and then, and then there's also, I could talk to, you know, folks at the National Honor Society to talk, to try to help coordinate if they're willing to do that.
Sounds good. Any?
If I may just say, that, that we have a lot of people reaching out to us for volunteer hours, both for scouting and for National Honor Society. So if, if they need volunteers, we can certainly put them in.
Okay, that's a, that's great idea, okay, thank you, Tom. That's great news.
That's great.
Yeah, yeah, well, head of our services, Mary Mertland, is, is coordinating that, and we've been discussing it lately because we've been trying to figure out, do we have, right, do we have enough work to satisfy all the people who are reaching out?
That sounds perfect, and then, yeah, okay.
Sounds like it'll be a win-win there.
Okay, so next up is staffing update by Tom.
More good news for us. So as of October seventh, we, library welcomed two new staff members to, to our library, and one was Kim Lipinski, who was here. As, so Hannah Hex joined our staff as a new children's librarian, and Kim Lipinski joined the staff as new office admin. Both adjusted wonderfully to the new positions and are actively, actively contributing, as you saw with the minutes. And if you come and if you stop into the children's room, you'll see Hannah's contributions as well.
Awesome.
These, these appointments fill the final two positions that we had open, so.
My goodness, we're fully staffed?
I think so.
Yeah.
When was the last time we've been fully, this is, like, it's been like a year since we've been fully staffed, that's wonderful.
I think we're there.
Do you still have staff you're waiting to return to work?
No, Cindy's, Cindy's back.
No, she's back as well, so the, the children's librarian, who was out with an injury, was able to come back. Actually, it was the same time that we welcomed Kim and Hannah in.
Great.
So she was able to participate in getting the room ready as well. Pardon me. So Hannah's been a great help reopening with the children, reopening the children's room. She's very welcoming and engaging, as well as having a flair for the creative. She's already started providing programs such as Library Babies, with some other innovative programs potentially in the works. Kim brings a wealth of experience to the admin, as an admin to the library office, and has, among other projects, taken on the arduous task of transcribing minutes to get this archive up to date, so seamless, feels like they've already been there a while because they fit beautifully into the staff, so, great, it's a pleasure to have them.
It's fantastic, yes. Great. Any other questions for Tom on staffing? Nope. Okay, so the next one, this one I probably is a little bit misnamed, we talked about this last month, but it was really more of a check-in, not, not really a, an assessment or, you know, the larger assessments done at the end of the year. So I just, I'll give a quick update that Tom and I met. I think the plan moving forward is that I'm going to meet regularly with him, probably once, once a month to start, or maybe every three weeks to start, just to check in, see what help he needs from the trustees, that we can then talk as a group. Give him any feedback that either we have as a group or we've heard, you know, from the staff. So we met, actually, was that yesterday?
It was yesterday.
Monday, yesterday? And yeah, I think that's probably about it, yeah.
Great idea.
Yeah. Okay, so moving on to item six, which is the walkabout. Did you guys, Aaron and Chris, did you get a chance to do the walkabout?
Well, I didn't agree to do a walkabout. So I think it's, I, I don't want to do them regularly, I just had done one because I'd never done one before.
Yep.
And I wanted to kind of give a different perspective, so I didn't do one this past month. So I haven't even been in, in the interior of the library yet to, to do a walkabout, but I felt like most of the issues we, I already kind of picked up on that.
Okay.
So I would, I guess I'd just open this up for certainly discussion about, you know, punch list items, something we talked about, you know, a couple of months ago. So we do the walkabout, we compile them, we look at the same things, and I think we had talked about maybe a few months ago, and, and maybe, I don't know if there's any traction, but maybe there's something that Kim could help with, it certainly helped prioritize that list of items. You know, because I think it's just a unsorted list to determine if we need to provide funding for different, you know, items that need to be fixed around the library.
So do you think, well, yeah, that's what I was gonna ask, do you think, like, you have a list that the next person starts with that list? And maybe either adds to it or, or strikes things off?
Or does John have a list, because John?
Well, I was just talking about process in general, right? If, if, if we end up with this punch list or
Yeah.
walkabout list, obviously it could go to Kim and, and Tom, and if there's items that need funding, we can vote on it and, and, you know, eventually strike them off. But then the next month, that walkabout person would just start with that list? Is that kind of what you're thinking?
I mean, it's a good idea, it wasn't what I was thinking, but I don't know, would that certainly bias them in terms of like, oh, I need to look at, this is what I need to look at this month, you know?
Yeah.
Well, probably do both, I would think they should do both.
Yeah.
Look at the list and also see what's, look at.
Yeah, or maybe they go, go around on their own, and then afterwards they compare what they came up with, with the list, to see what is new or, yeah, okay. We can, I mean, I don't think that's important.
But I think there are some important things we had discussed, and I think, I don't know, I don't want the details to get lost. Because some of them I still don't feel that comfortable with, and I've heard from other people. You know, one of them is the doors.
Yep.
The flooding, the general public thinks that they don't, they think there's a space between the door and the floor, and they think that shouldn't be, I don't know what, I'm just bringing it up.
Yeah, I, I think that should be at the top of the list.
And we had the wet place, but there was stuff in the teens room, remember? It's still come, we were still.
The teen door, you mean?
Yeah, that's the one that's fixed, isn't it?
Yeah.
Plus the garden.
Has that been fixed? See, that's stuff we don't know.
No, that hasn't been fixed.
I mean, we did talk about the, some things like the front door, which is, that's, that's been taken care of.
The recurring theme of water, mitigating water damage, including the, the roof garden and, and whether there was water leaking down, and water travels in funky ways. And, and so you never know where it's originating from, and so I know that we were paying attention to any new spots on the rooftop, the, the ceiling tiles, based on what we thought may have been a breach from that roof garden area. Has that been a problem at all?
Well, they, they made a change to the roof, because they removed the outer, outer row of, of things, but I don't know if anyone's noticed any new.
It's been a dry summer, though.
Yeah.
It's the first I've heard of it.
It's been a very dry summer, yeah.
So.
Maybe we should just pay attention to it.
Maybe I can convince Chris, was Chris, was he the, were you guys the ones that did last month's?
Aaron and Chris did.
No, I did it August.
You did August?
Oh.
I believe.
So do we think Chris did September?
I think it was, was it last month's?
No, I did August, because then I couldn't make the August meeting, and I'd sent it over to Chris, and then Chris couldn't present it, so ended up presenting it at the September meeting, but the last walkabout I did was in August.
Okay.
Why don't I take this on with Chris, since he's not here to defend himself, kind of? So, you know, oh, well, I mean, I think he, I think he's fine with, with continuing to do it, but I can jump back in, especially since I have all the old pictures immediately available, so I can go double-check the community room, which I think last we checked, I don't think there were new spots and things like that. There was still some damage that hadn't been cleared up yet, but I, I didn't think it was a big deal, just because, you know, we want to make sure it's stopped leaking before we bother to go and, you know, fix the law and stuff. So um, so I can take that on with Chris. Uh, so I'll work with him to do the work walkabout. And then maybe we'll actually like uh. Pre-prioritize a list of things. Um, and I I what I suspect there's gonna be is gonna like two categories of like. You know. Water damage doors, you know, actual functional things that really need to be addressed. Sooner rather than later and then there'll be a second category which will be like um, you know, this little fixture is. Has a crack in it or something like that, or there's a, you know, a a plate missing for some uh for some door or something like that. But then we can, maybe we can send that over to to you and uh Kim and we can get that tracked from month to month going forward.
I think that sounds great. And then Tom, you could use that list for just prioritizing and getting them, yeah.
And and just also to make sure to put in the list that the um the flooring in the teen game room. Like that's something that we need to.
That should be up up the top of the list.
Together based on what I, you know. Minutes that I've completed, I could at least start something.
Well, I know Chris has and John and Aaron, they have like a document that they had put together, so you should at least start with that.
We wanna make sure that the children's that um the game room is on that cuz we were gonna change the flooring and we didn't do that cuz we had no one to basically. Do the estimating and then be the project manager on it.
Correct, and the I think the way that was left was that the teen. A department head was supposed to work with the town administrator to get a an estimate. I don't remember if that was before you or.
I have been in discussions with town administrators.
Yeah, cuz ultimately that we would need an estimate. And we'd have to come up with the funding source um to to do that.
And that was pretty important, I felt.
It's been very popular.
Any other comments on that before we move on? Okay, um, so now new business. Um, first one is staff appreciation. Um, so typically, well. I mean, we all recognize the amount of stress and hard work that the staff has done this year and end of last year. Um, typically in the fall um is when we have some kind of staff appreciation event. Um, it's ranged in the past from um having people over to one of our houses, you know, and have like little. You know, wine and cheese and cocktails and stuff, but just like a get together um to, I guess, you know, sending them. I can't remember what else we did and whether we sent them lunch or food or something um at the library.
Couple of times, um, it was all pandemic uh timing, so. We 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 made um uh gifts, uh you know, individual gifts that they can take with them.
Order some clothing or something? What happened with that?
Well, we ordered a jacket for them.
I thought we revisited. We were gonna order some cuz there's so many new co- new. New staff, I thought we really talked about that. I think it might have when Cindy was here too.
But I think we need input from them, so maybe.
Cuz that might be a great thing to do.
And then we did do, like, we did the staff appreciation, like we did the um.
Yes, there was the edible arrangements and some things from like snacks. Was that for Librarians Day?
I think it was, that was like the spring, wasn't it?
Look into that, into the jacket. That's something we can take out of state aid, right? Discuss that cuz I think we paid for it one time.
We'd have to look at that, but.
I think that's how we did it. It was years.
Yeah, we did it. Yeah, you can't do a food event.
No, not food. I think that's why I think that's fairly.
It would be helpful to know like what would the staff prefer? Hats? Would they prefer jackets? Like what what is it? You know, cuz I think like last time, like maybe they had like a heavier one and they might like a lighter one.
I think Cindy said they were thinking about a lighter one, but that's.
So I I'd like to kind of separate that cuz I think that was something we'd like to do and make sure that people who need stuff. Can get stuff, right? Jackets and whatnot.
I think we really should do that.
Absolutely.
Cuz I think that's, I think I know, remember them wanting that and we have all new staff. I think you can separate them. I think that has to be done, not to the wayside. We have to figure out what they would like. If Tom can ask them, I think that would be.
So I I'd like to take a couple steps back here, right? So. With um I I inquired with a lot of other um trustee organizations about um staff appreciation events, right? So uh especially when it involves, you know, food and food items and whatnot. So. Some libraries will add it into their town budget and they'll do a very. I don't wanna say lavish cuz I don't know, I haven't been there, but it's something that is really well well done. Um, and that's that's budgeted by their town, you know, to do an appreciation event. Um, we cannot use state aid for any of this, right? So if we're gonna do an event, it comes out of trustees' pockets, right? And this is common amongst all trustee organizations. That's what they all said, right? So I I know that if we wanna do something, um we all have to be okay with this coming out of our pockets. Okay, and you know. I I could take it, I I could take it either way. I nobody should be forced to 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 pay for something like this, but. We have to consider this. If this is an event we wanna do, then then we need to make sure, all understand it's coming out of our pockets. Either we do it or don't do it. Or we find some middle ground, right? Now. We don't have to do like a a food item sort of event and we could do something um that would be appropriate for state aid money. Although we have to really kind of vet it properly because uh there's certain things like, you know. Gifts or awards, right, for um can't come out of uh state aid, you know, things like that. You know, individual awards for appreciating some somebody for their achievements. We just take state aid money and give them two hundred dollars. That doesn't work that way. So it would have to be something that has to be vetted if if it's not gonna be like a food item or something that's out of our our pockets. Now, that said. I really like the idea and I, this was so much fun. Uh, it was at um. Uh, a previous trustee's house and we had like a, you know, wine and cheese and stuff. It wasn't terribly expensive. But we played games with the librarians. It was awesome. You know, we played like Jackbox games, which are a lot of fun and I think Jane was there. And she was so, um, she's like, wow, I won. I never win anything. You know, it was really kind of cool to see the personalities come out a little bit. Um, but that. Those sort of events, um, I guess the staff feedback that we got. Again, I'm I'm talking from like five years or more of experience. It's like, well, I don't wanna have to go be obligated to go something after work after I've worked all day. Like, okay, well, it's not mandatory, right? Um, and even if even if um they feel obligated to go, I mean, it's it's still their choice, right? Even if they don't really wanna be there, it's still their choice. We're not forcing anybody to be there. Um, but. That's kind of like, that's what I felt was really well received instead of trying to come up with, you know. Creative ways to to appreciate them every year. Um, I thought that was always a fun event. I enjoyed it. I think staff enjoyed it. But I don't know, what do you guys think about?
I I enjoyed those events. I thought it gave an opportunity. Some of the staff brought their significant others and some of us had our significant significant others there. I thought that was really good and from a cost perspective, I think we each brought a bottle of wine.
Some thirty dollars or something.
It wasn't wasn't that bad, that bad or that much.
And I think we can do like a combination, like we can do that and also get like the jackets, you know, like.
Yeah, I would consider those two separate things.
Absolutely.
That's what I would do. I was gonna say, I didn't go to the event that you went to. Cuz I think I was sick or something, but I remember everybody liking it and that was she was the trustee. She sat next to us.
She took a sword.
You told us what she did. I missed it.
I must not have been there cuz I don't remember this. Who's whose house was it at?
She was a trustee.
Uh, one of the trustees? Not in this room?
Daniella.
Yeah, it was Daniella. I couldn't go and I was sorry. And I I remember having one at one at your place.
We uh we hosted one at our house. I remember the Libby's had one at their place. Yeah, Cindy did one.
Holly did one.
Yeah, so why don't we? Why don't we put this back on Tom for now and if you can ask, well, I don't know, just as a proposal, like should Tom ask his staff? Would they be up for a trustee hosted so after work event?
Yeah, I mean, I I would propose something that is like the the library hours is five o'clock on a Friday, the library. Hours, six, six o'clock. So it could be something that, you know, is open uh from six to nine o'clock. Pop in, say hello, you know, bring a significant other. Um, and we may get some people, we may not, but I think um. I think it's a great opportunity for for them to get to know us and vice versa, you know, and hopefully we can all attend.
Does that sound good, Tom?
I can certainly bring it to the staff.
Bring it to the staff or or ask what they, if that doesn't sound good, what they would want instead.
I don't, I don't wanna speak for them. I wanna give them the opportunity to chime in. I will. The one thing I will say is that a number of our staff live considerably distanced away. Um, over, you know, hour or more. And so, you know, we have we have a fair amount of people who likely would not be attending because of that, but um. Right, that's 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 their call, you know.
Exactly, and people who live in town, I mean, it's their call not to go either.
I will, I will put that out and see how.
And then I think I, as a second piece, maybe inquire about what um. Whether it's a lightweight jacket or something that we can consider since we have so many new staff.
Can can I frame that request uh in a slight slightly different way? Because I I don't think the request is we're gonna buy um thirty new jackets, right? Uh, or thirty new hats or something. I think the idea was um we wanted to make sure that everybody had the opportunity to get a jacket. Um, if they didn't get one, you know, from the first round years ago.
I don't think that's the way Cindy was looking at it. I think she was thinking.
How are we looking at it though?
I think we were gonna get, I think everyone, it's a new staff.
You know, this new library team.
Yeah, so I don't know that I'd be, I mean, certainly we can discuss it, you know, once af- after you bring it back, but certainly, you know, thirty new jackets when we gave jackets, you know. Four years ago, people have jackets.
Yeah, I don't know how many.
To go with like a new item.
There aren't that many left. I think we're talking about a lightweight something.
Yeah, okay.
I think it built, but I think it builds unity and I think it's a nice thing to do.
Well, and it's. Functional too, right? They'll they'll be wearing it, people will see their.
And also too, and I think Cindy made an excellent point when we talked about it last time, like, you know, they go to different events like. Like the um. Oktoberfest and then also like the spring one in so. Yeah, to wear that when they're going. They also go, um, actually, um, I know that there was um the the fun. The the uh friendly trick or treating at the municipal center, so I think um whenever our children's like managers went over. There as well, so it's just a way to also signal to the town, like this is somebody you're from the library who is, you know, is um, you know. You know, participating in community events, so um so it's a value. I mean, it's something nice and for them to have pride in, but also it's.
That's a great point.
It's got lots of.
Does everything make sense?
Well, I just wanna know, I just wanna clarify, if. If what I'm bringing to them is that everybody would get something. As opposed to the four people who have joined the staff since then. Some sort of new clothing.
Light, yeah, lightweight jacket or if they don't think they want a lightweight jacket, there's something else like.
That's what Cindy had said, if that's my recollection.
Right, cuz I think she had a heavier.
It was many months.
Yeah, I mean, I would imagine if it's a little cool at the library, they wanna put something on. And then, of course, we might have to revisit it if they're super expensive and the cost and whatever.
I I will put it out tentatively. And see how, see what kind of response, but I just wanted to make sure that I don't wanna. Open it up to everybody and people get excited about it and then say, oh, actually only four of you are getting it, so.
Well, I I think of um the the marketing aspect too of, you know, when whenever things are. You know, it's something people are wearing, but then again. Literally, a one size fits all could be Grafton, Grafton Library umbrellas or something like that, not necessarily a piece of clothing, but. Something that is functional that everyone could use and you wouldn't have to literally size people um up. But that's just a thought that 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 it is something that is visible, not all the time. It's only, you know, outdoors. And when it's raining, but that's just a consideration that, you know, something that's one size fits all.
I think, I know what Cindy said. I think she will be a good help for you.
I will leave it open-ended. And see what the response is from the staff.
And then for the, an actual event, if the trustees were to host it, would we try to get that in this year? Cuz with the holiday, like maybe early December?
Or maybe do like January when things are quieter.
Yeah, uh in the new year. Czgrafen celebrates the holidays is the December eighth. There's not a, there's not a lot of weekends, there are not a lot of Fridays.
The next opportunity we'll have to discuss it is at our November twenty something board meeting.
Okay, um, so moving on, next item is the new library door locking system update.
So the update is that we are moving forward with it. Um, there there were. The board had approved the funding for it to move forward and so then I was working, I had to work with the uh the new company, Peranton. Which is the company that handles all the municipal buildings in town, so we're happy to be moving forward with them. Um, they were, there was a set of requirements that we had to provide or guarantee that we would be providing. In order for them to. Start setting it up. Uh, all of that, I've worked with some people from the town municipality, so they were great with that. Um, we have everything in place, uh and I signed the proposal, so that has been submitted. Um, once the company got the proposal from me, which they had last Friday, uh they they ordered the materials. So we we have the materials ordered. Um, the next step is for me to meet with. Uh, a technician from the company cuz we're gonna go over the old system to see so they can map it for the new system. Um, then when the materials come in, which which they thought would be about ten days, uh then it's just scheduling an onsite visit. And the plan is to have the new system installed and up and running by the end of November.
Great.
Which we're all pleased to hear.
Any additional comments, questions?
I I love the fact that this is um. Getting addressed. It's been such an ongoing issue and and as I look at your first four months. There's been so much that is now like finally, you know, between the the children's room and 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 now this. And fully staffed and and so things are just coming around so nicely. And I like how it's a hyper-local um organization that has a great reputation. Where from, for lack of a better term, from an economic gain standpoint, any service calls. We're not outlaying that thousand or twelve hundred bucks because someone's coming from two hours away.
That certainly played in our decision. As well as some municipalities. Being pleased with the company.
Next on the list is policy update, Aaron.
So um. I was late in posting the agenda. We were gonna meet this Monday. Um, so we are uh tentatively meeting on November sixth, uh which is next Wednesday. Um, pending any feedback from either John or Tom, and I haven't heard any yet on the agenda. Um, but I think generally we'd like to meet in person, at least I felt that was um. Uh, a little bit easier and at six thirty instead of seven because most of the meeting rooms, um, they're blocked at seven thirty. So I know we tend to go right till eight and so the staff doesn't have to come around and and, you know, needle us. Hey, guys, it's seven forty-five. So um, so next Wednesday at uh at six thirty, uh we'll meet. So, um, so next Wednesday at, uh, at six-thirty, uh, we'll meet in conference room, uh, two nineteen. Uh, so I'll post that, uh, as soon as we're done tonight. And then, uh, going forward, um, I don't know if it's too soon to meet the second Wednesday of November, but the proposed, um, meeting schedule, uh, we're gonna try to stick to that is, um, the second Wednesday, so it would be.
The thirteenth?
It would be the thirteenth, yep. And then Wednesday, twelve-eleven would be the next, uh, date. So those are tentative meeting dates, uh, for the rest of the year.
So you, you do wanna meet on the thirteenth as well?
Is that the policy meeting you're talking about?
Yes, we can talk about it on the sixth, if we feel like there's more to do in a week.
Yeah.
Then we'll do that, um, but those are the nights that, um, you know, we'd, we'd like to put on the books. And again, we can play with those dates if they don't work. Um, so that said, um, any movement, Tom, I guess, from, uh, any of the staff members who might like to join us?
Um, I would have to put that out.
Okay.
To see.
Excellent. All right, uh, that's it.
May I ask you a question? Thank you for all your hard work on this. I know it's just one of those things that, um, you know, sometimes is out of sight, out of mind, but you have done an amazing job at this. I have a question regarding, all right, since that, um, Doug, uh, on this webpage, when you click on each of the policies, does that bring you to a Google, like a drive or is that a PDF? And is that something that everyone has access to?
I think we've discussed this before, but it's good to go through it again.
I mean, here I, I clicked on it and it pops up, but it is on a Google Drive, um.
And it's a PDF, right, it has to be.
Okay, so there's no access issues, there shouldn't be any access issues if, whether people are on a, a Mac or a, a desktop or anything or.
Shouldn't be.
It should not be.
Should be.
All right, I just.
But the library didn't, didn't the, didn't the town migrate away from Google Drive? So we might, we might at some point work to get these policies moved to a different, different server. I mean, it's fine for now, but if they're transitioning away from Google Drive, we'd wanna do the same.
Yep.
And so all of these are housed though, they're not, they're all downloaded somewhere on a, some, they're not only in the cloud.
Um, I mean, the, the master copies are there in the cloud.
So if the cloud crashed, I guess you.
We still have them.
Our server crashed, our server crashed.
We still have them.
You know, um.
Kim should have, but someone's got a copy.
So they're, they're, they're all, yeah, they're all hard copied. Another town had, uh, an issue where some things have disappeared, so, all right.
Well, if, but di- didn't we migrate off of Google Drive like a while ago, wasn't that?
It was a while ago.
It was a while ago, but these are all still.
Google Drive, it was, um, the email system they migrated over. So in their files, if they had a.
But what, didn't they migrate off the entire G suite over to the Microsoft suite, isn't that what it was?
Yeah.
Okay.
And they probably had a file repository, I mean, I've never seen it.
Yeah, so I mean, I, I guess, I wouldn't be worried that these files are gone. It seems odd that they would still be even accessible on the Google Drive links, but if for whatever reason they're on an old plan and that gets shut off, we should still have copies of these within the new, uh, Microsoft OneDrive or whatever they're calling it now.
I think you should make sure, I know she, he just thought, but that was another whole issue was the web, how we needed to be updated. The, the library's website, didn't we discuss that?
Yeah, that is something.
I think we started discussing that.
We did.
Cause it needs to be updated, we, we know it's a huge project.
Yeah, that's a, that's.
So we felt like we had a lot on our plate, but it's out there.
If I, if I may suggest, I, I would have Kim access each of the policies from the library website, print it out, put it in a folder, just so we have, we know we have hard copies of whatever the latest versions are that are.
And save a digital copy.
Sorry, I, I don't think we need to do that. I, I would, I would almost guarantee that like if, if these files did, were in Google Drive, even if they're still being accessed via Google Drive now, they should have been, I would, I would assume that they got migrated over to whatever new thing that we have, so.
So we just wanted to know where. I would make a digital copy if you ask me.
Well, I, I would just double check that the, the new Microsoft Drive, you know, I think it's called OneDrive, has those same files, so that they got migrated properly. Um, I don't, I don't think we need to, like, like, as what Roger illusion, I don't think the cloud will go down, but if we, if we'd ever moved the files over to the new cloud, that's more of the issue, so. As long as they exist in the new cloud, that would be.
And I think my, to my point earlier though, it wasn't so much, I guess, my initial, um, difficulty in accessing documents didn't have to do with the policy, but it was other documents regarding, um, I'm at a loss for the words, the, um, strategic plan type of stuff. There were, there were documents that had, uh, the links had just, you know, weren't active.
Yeah, I've encountered that too, sometimes you'll click on a document, wasn't it? But what I guess what we need to do is, I don't know who the webmaster is.
You don't have anybody.
Um, but I would say anytime you identify a link that's broken, you just drop this email to this info at wherever that link is.
So there, there's, um, there's either, there's programs, there's services you can get that will crawl your website looking for broken links. So if we have someone at the town who is our liaison for.
Somebody at the town actually just re- uh, recently reached out to me about some broken links. So I believe that they are monitoring that.
Oh, good.
So I'm just, I'm in process of getting those updated.
Yeah, so.
But so where do the, what about the, um, the original Word documents? Do we know where those are, Aaron?
Um, no.
Okay, well, how about we just put it on, who wants to try to track those down? Anybody?
We, we don't have access, do we?
No, but one of us should work with, whether it's Kim or Tom and, and try to find all the original documents.
Okay, but if.
Like if we wanna edit the.
I know, is the permanent doc, oh, I see, they're all PDFs.
These are all PDFs, so we must have a Word version somewhere. Um, I'll, I'll, I'll take that on with, um.
You don't need to, it's a policy committee item, so I don't mind, um.
We discuss it next month then.
I mean, it doesn't really matter until we need to edit it, but at which point you'll have to dig it up.
I think that Beth had them or something, I, it, I think she might have.
Yeah, I'm sure they're saved someplace, but, but just to go back to the, the printing out. So in general, like, you know, we don't want a lot of, even though we are a library, we don't want a lot of paper. But I'm wondering if there might be some policies that we do wanna have printed in case, for example, like the internet went down or something and, you know, there was like for like, uh, some of the emergency policies, uh, maybe have it in a binder that's accessible, like I think that might be helpful. And not necessarily every single one, but the, the critical ones might be, might be helpful.
Yeah, I know Aaron has reiterated this multiple times, but, you know, setting policy and working with the library director on policies is one of our, you know, key mandates, it's really important for the trustees to, um, keep up to date on all these policies and, and review them on a, on a somewhat regular schedule. Okay, any other questions related to policies? Um, if not, we'll move to the director's report. Um, you know, one of the goals, we talked about this last month or maybe the month before, is, you know, having Tom, um, send us a director's report in advance so that, um, as a board, we can review that, so that at this meeting, we're not going through the entire director's report. Um, the idea would be that Tom could hit some of the high points, uh, um, and then we could ask questions if you had questions on them, so. With that.
Great. And some of them have already been discussed.
Yep.
So I'll go through and I'll skip the ones that have been already discussed, like staffing. Um, I did provide some statistics about usage in the library. Children's room update, um, Kupla project as well. So besides getting the children's room back open.
Yeah.
Um, I hope everybody has taken the time to walk through the common and look up because it's gorgeous, so. Looks really great. Staff develop, excuse me, staff development day, uh, we had our second since I've been here on, in, uh, October seventeenth, um, with several great, uh, activities. Particularly a slash, a slideshow where staff members all contributed, um, about their favorite places or aspects of the library. That was really received and, and a lot of fun. Uh, just recently I attended the New England Library Association's annual conference, so I wanna appreciate, I wanna thank you all for having provided the opportunity to do that. It was very beneficial for me. There were a lot of, it's a, it's a wonderful conference and there were a lot of great programs, uh, sessions, particularly regarding, uh, management, library management, which was really beneficial. As well as just making, uh, contacts with members from other libraries. Throughout New England, but particularly, um, somebody from the Shrewsbury Library, which was really nice. Great library and, uh, happy to touch base with them to, um, and, uh, they informed me that there's, there's a group of directors from, from the area. So in all, uh, area libraries that get together.
She's a great library director.
Yeah.
I'm really looking forward to that. Um, adult programming has started again in the library, which we're really pleased about. So, um, it has been, put on, sort of put on hold during, uh, the recent unpleasantness. And, uh, so now we're opening that back up to, at least to library-related events. So if you're interested in learning how to do belly dancing, let us know. We also had a, uh, paranormal investigators come in, which was very well received. Uh, we had about thirty-five people and it was very lively, um, or maybe I shouldn't say lively. There were some great findings, uh, if you're curious, you need to stop by the library and I'll tell you all about it, so.
So the funky noises, poltergeist.
The honking from the HVAC, you mean?
That, that was fixed with the new unit, actually. That turns out was not paranormal. But we, we did have some, we, there were some things to report, so it was, it was pretty interesting. The front door security lock system is moving forward and the only other one that I really wanted to touch base on, which I'm thrilled about, is that October first, I submitted the state aid report, which was, um, an ordeal, but, uh, it was done, so.
It's a lot of work.
We, um, and I, and I wanna thank, uh, Mary Loria from the town as well, from the financial department, because if it wasn't for her, uh, locating what, what each line item meant, corresponding to the state aid report was, was very arduous. When I showed up in June, uh, we weren't, we weren't going to hit the thirteen percent that we thought it was. We ended up hitting the fifteen percent.
Wonderful.
So we are going to be completely certified and funded from MBL.
Oh, my goodness, that's, yay, fantastic.
Yeah, so I, I'm pleased about that one.
Yep, well done.
Thank you.
Very nice.
Great job.
I have a couple of questions.
Uh, yep.
That's good.
Dana?
So, so when you talk about, um, you said there were sev- sixty-seven new patrons, what do you mean by that?
New patrons who, so people who got, came in and got brand-new library cards.
That's incredible.
Yeah, so September was, is National Library Card Sign-Up Month, so there was quite a push for that. Um, and so we had sixty-seven new people, new people, not, not renewals, but new people coming in and getting, uh, cards.
That's phenomenal.
Which I wasn't quite sure because, you know, sometimes it seems like, well, we've all got a library card. And we don't, so we have, we still have people coming in. That was a great number, honestly, our numbers are consistently, are consistently high on new, on new library cards.
Cause that, that's.
So our outreach is working.
If you, I guess I remember I went to the Shrewsbury Library a year after they had reopened and that's about what their numbers was, were, and they thought they were incredible. But that is a much bigger library and a bigger community, so I'm really impressed by that.
Yep.
So I just wanted clarification. I, I wanted to un- understand, is the community room open now? If someone in the community wants to, um, get it, get the space in there or have a meeting or anything like that?
That I have not reopened yet.
Okay.
Uh, for a couple of reasons, one, I wanted to get a couple of things under our belt, just to build a momentum of, of reusing the room. Um, as well as, I've never been here when the community room was open to outside, uh, community members. So I need to know what the process is for that. I know there's a form that comes to me that I would be the one approving.
It's very important, the community expects us to be able to come and use the room, so you know, you know.
So, um, I definitely want to reopen that. So I would love to know what the process is, if you're aware of that. I will say, um, one of the reasons I've been hesitant was the front door locking system. And so until we have that completely resolved, it makes it difficult. So for instance, the Friends of the Library with their book sale. We used to just give them a card and they could come in on Sunday and scan themselves in and have the library open.
Yeah.
With the, the, um.
Yeah, it was a great procedure.
The elaborate way that we need to do the opening and closing.
That makes sense.
Because of it, um.
It's like, yeah, that giant bar that.
Yeah, the molyneux, yeah, so, you know, when the Friends did their book sale, um, I was here on Sunday. You know, I, I came and opened and I came and closed.
And then, and Saturday.
But that's underway, right? Cause I mean, we've even had pub, we've even had community pub, meetings for the town in that community room.
And we, we can host meetings during the workday in that.
During the work, yeah, during the workday and during, I mean, they've had programs in there that the town asked us that they could use the space and use them.
As long as it's during the regular library hours until the door is resolved, then.
Then that's fine, I just.
But it sounds like we're close to getting that resolved, like a week or two.
Oh, that's, that.
The, the locking.
He, the locking, he said by the end.
By the end of November is the, is the, is the, is the proposed tentative date.
So could we open the community room now for, during library hours to the community? And then once the locking is situated, then potentially do after hours?
And we have a, we, I know we have policies on that.
We do have policies, so maybe it just takes one of us to sit with Tom and go through all that.
If somebody can go over it with me to let me know what our.
Yep. Does anyone have, anyone wanna volunteer to do that with Tom?
Well, do we wanna discuss it during our policy meeting, uh, next month, say?
I mean, the policy's, I just posted the agenda, so if it's not on the agenda, we won't.
Uh, I mean.
I can do it, I have to read the policy.
The policies already exist.
I can read it.
I mean, we could take fifteen minutes afterwards and chat with them about it too.
Isn't there a form, and maybe it was taken down.
Well, again, I think we just need to have a trustee offer to walk through that workflow with Tom.
Are you saying, and is Tom thinking it would be better to the end of the month? Are you saying like?
I was thinking to open the community room now to, in hours now, and then wait till we get the locks.
Well, I could help, I mean, I'll have to read the policy, uh, I mean, I don't know it verbatim. I just know the community really want, would like that and plus, it's really good when we get people like from the town to use the room. It's cool, it's great, cause then people come in the library. We get people that may not normally come into the library, although I know we're doing phenomenally well, I mean, sixty-seven cards is really.
Yep, okay, so.
Well, I can plan, I can plan to, to do it with Tom after the policy meeting next Wednesday, if that's easier, Dana, so you don't have to do something separate. Um, also I can check with my wife, who was a pretty frequent user of that, uh, that form and that process. Um, sure, yeah.
Okay.
I think it's really important.
Yeah, but I think you're part of, part of it.
I know Tom will get comfortable with it.
If you go to, um, our, our library website, it says, you know, that, that it's unavailable. We're unexa- unable to accept any new reservations, but there used to be a form on this website, so. So, you, that needs to be reactivated, because then it would, then it emails you and then you get to approve it, so. Um, so it kinda ties into like being able to update the website.
It, yeah.
Someone can do that, I mean, there must be somebody.
I have staff members who can do that, but I need to know what the, what our process is.
Right, so John will work with.
Yeah, the, the short of it is, someone would fill out a form, it was a really terrible form, but I think we have a new event system that maybe it would tie into and the director would basically just approve them on a case-by-case basis and, you know, I think for the most part, they all got approved probably.
Yeah, as long as they.
As long as they met our, our guidelines that are outlined in the policy.
Existing library events.
What's that?
And don't, don't conflict with library events.
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
Another library.
Library stuff takes precedence, yeah.
So they can't book it, like, you, with other conference rooms, you can book it yourself, but this.
Well, you essentially don't book it, you request it and then it comes back.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, okay, so I'll, I'll have John work with Tom to go through that process and John, you can work, ask Dana if you need any help.
Okay.
Sure.
Okay. Okay. Great. I had a question, too. Tom mentioned the Kupla was done. I think it would be great if, if we could come out with some type of, I don't know, I don't know if it has to be a press release or something on social, that, social media that just describes and thanks the community for that, because, you know, much of that came from CPC funding.
Do we know, has it been paid already? Did they do, you know, do they do, you know how they do it?
Yeah.
CPC is the last ones to go out.
I, I, we'd have to talk to the town administrator, but I don't know if that's appropriate for this board, but I was thinking if somebody on this board could work with, maybe work with Tom to put together a little bit of, an article or something that could get just posted, even if it just gets posted on our Facebook site and our...
I could work on that.
Their website.
Was it you, Dana, that did the community advocate thing when Tom was, when we first hired him?
Yeah, she did.
Because you're the guru and expert.
She is, she is a guru.
I can work with Tom.
That would be great.
We wanted to make sure, it would be good, yeah, we wanted to make sure the children's room's open.
Correct.
And whatnot. And we're pretty close to maybe getting the community room up and active. So I'll talk with Tom about it, we'll figure out, we'll figure out what to do.
Yeah, I don't think it has to be anything significant, right?
No, no, it could be, it could be just something he puts on the website, maybe they use on social media.
I haven't read the graph, the news recently, had they covered anything regarding the Kupla?
Not that I know of, but...
Kupla, no, but I know they did, did an article about the children's room.
Right.
As we were getting ready for it to reopen.
They did.
So, this is, this is a, probably one of the largest projects we've done, you know, since the, the construction of the new library. Are there any, you know, takeaways that, you know, we wanna consider on the next time that we do such a large project? One of the things that comes to mind was just, I think an auditor came through and didn't see that there was proper information, what they felt was information posted about what was going on at the library and the project. We might have had a little signage, but there was no like reference material, so maybe you can go and pick up and try to understand what the project was, was for, cause they saw the scaffolding and they say, what is this?
There's a huge sign out there that says that the community preservation, it's a huge sign, a red sign, is that still there? I mean, the public knows, it's, it's a huge sign that tells everybody. Community, that's what they, you know, the mass community...
They were looking for, for more than, more than that.
Okay, wow.
So, that was the only thing that, that came to my ears. I don't know if you had anything else that, you know, it's just to reflect on.
It was the only experience that I had with anybody questioning that.
And then some of the change orders, right? That we had to reapprove.
Yep.
Yeah.
For the Kupla, yeah, there were some additional funding requested.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you, Dana, for doing that. Any other questions for Tom on the director's report?
No, I like the format. One of the things that we used to get was like a yes/no log, which was kinda cool. And you gave us a little bit of that, a taste of that with the children's room, some of the commentary, but do we have that in his director's report? And is that still being collected? I think that it is, cause somehow I got a link to it at some point.
The patron comment?
No, it's just...
They called it a yes/no log.
Yes/no log. So, when, when a patron asks for something, and you can say, yes, we do have that, and they write it down in a log, and they write the initials next to who said it. Might be something to chat with the staff about if you're not familiar with it. And then, the no log is also used as a way to say, well, no, we don't have that, but we'll consider it, and is a way to improve, you know, some of the services that they offer.
Yeah, that was excellent.
Yep.
I'll look into it.
Thanks.
Okay. Seeing that there's no public here to give public input, we'll pass that. Next meeting, the policy subcommittee is November 6th at 6:30 in room 219, which is the larger conference room, right? It's that larger conference room upstairs. Our next Board of Library Trustee meeting is Wednesday, November 20th. I actually am not gonna be here, I ended up having to go out of town that week, so depending on everyone else, is everyone else okay with that date, the 20th? It's the Wednesday before. Okay. So then, assuming you'll be here, you'll be running the meeting?
I think I'll be sick.
Yeah, I, I will do that.
Great.
And if you're not available, choose somebody else. Carrie's up there, she's in the front row.
That's right.
No, we're not.
That should be a good rule, yeah, next time.
And I think the, you know, now that Kim's on board, I met with Kim, and we walked through the whole process of preparing for this meeting, so the idea is that she would send out the, you know, like maybe myself or Tom have some items that we've put on the agenda, or from the previous month's meeting, we've put it on the agenda, so she would send that out to the group a week in advance. And of course, that means you guys have to read through it, and if there's any other items you want added or not, provide that feedback to Kim, so that she can then update the agenda, send it to the clerk's office the Friday before our meeting.
So, I would just say that, you know, tonight, there were some things that we removed, right? So, I don't think it's appropriate for one of us to say, Kim, you gotta remove that. I think it probably should go through you, cause you should be the keeper of the, the agenda, right?
Okay.
Running the meetings.
Yep.
So we would say, hey Doug, I think this needs to come off, and, you know, I don't think we should instruct her directly.
Don't we usually send, when we wanna add items, don't we normally send it to her? That's what we use to do.
No one, I don't think anyone responded this last time, so...
Oh, okay.
I think too many cooks is not a good idea.
No, we don't, yeah.
I agree with Aaron.
I like, I think, I think Aaron's correct.